Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 11th Lake Washington School Board meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Bernard, seconded by Director La Liberty. All those in favor, please signify by voting aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So, we have recognition of the Lake Washington Schools Foundation this evening. Dr. Pierce?
Great, so we are so pleased to have a fabulous partner in the Lake Washington Schools Foundation. And tonight Executive Director Larry Wright and co-presidents Sarah Stone and Matt Eisenhower are here. And so you're here so we can hear a little bit from you and we can recognize you for all of your support for students in our district.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us. We're very pleased to be supporting the district's efforts and we're very proud of our efforts.
There we go.
All right. Is that all right? Okay. So, we're very pleased to be here to support the district's efforts on behalf of our students. And we're especially excited this year, Lake Washington Schools Foundation is committed to providing a minimum of $200,000 this year. But we hope to add to that through some new programs that we've got. Because of course, as the district grows, our goal is to grow so we can do more for more and more kids. So, we're just happy to be here. And Larry's going to talk more about specifics.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to echo Sarah's comments that we're really excited about what we're doing this year. We're very pleased to be supporting the district. So not only are we investing a minimum of $200,000 in some of the tried and true programs like Link's Mentoring, Avid, Art Docents, which is a new program we're being involved with, new teacher support. But we're also pleased to be supporting new projects like the district's Innovation Fund. And so, we've had some conversations and we're excited to be involved in that. We're proud to launch our new partnership with Pantry Packs. So, some of you may know Pantry Packs. Pantry Packs is a volunteer organization that brings weekend food to more than 750 students in the district each week. We're going to be the wind in their sails, whatever you want to call it. We are their fiscal agents and so we're proud to be partnering with them this year. Looking ahead, the foundation will continue to support efforts in the areas of innovation, equity, and community. So stay tuned, we have a lot of new things in store that we hope are going to bring some value both to the district and our students. And I'd like to just close both as a parent and as the executive director and congratulate the board and the staff on a great first week. You know, this is why we're here and thank you for making this such a great place for our kids to learn. We appreciate it.
And as always, thank you. The foundation has become an integral part of the district and we're big fans of Link's Avid and finding new programs where you can help. So thank you so much. And Pantry Packs is one of my personal favorites, so thank you.
Be glad to answer your questions if anybody has any. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, we look forward to another great year of working together. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're on to host school.
Great. So it's our tradition for our September Board meeting, our first September Board meeting, to have our host school really be about all of our schools and the work of our director's school support. So John's going to do a little introduction here and we've got a really fun little presentation for you.
Well, like Dr. Pierce said, on an annual basis, kids come to school and that means the doors open and school starts. And so each year, the director's school support are out in schools observing what's occurring, helping out as they can, and making sure that we have a smooth start to the year. You'll see on this slide, we do have four directors serving the four learning communities within the district. Each of them will provide you with a bit of information tonight about the start of the school year.
Hi, I'm Rick Burden, Director of School Support for the Lake Washington Learning Community. And we had a wonderful first day of school. We welcomed over 29,000 students again this year, first grade through 12th grade. And we have the great opportunity to spend a lot of time in schools and the first day of school is, I think, all of our, one of our favorite days. We got to talk with kids and parents and staff and everyone is really excited. And it was a fun day and a successful day, so anyway.
I'm Matt Livingston, I'm the Director of School Support for the Eastlake Learning Community. And at our elementary level, of course, the students are coming and they're learning things like how to line up, where to put their backpacks, where to put their jackets, where to find things like the principal's office, and not for, you know, for good reasons. And where's the nurse? Where's the bathroom? Where's the backup bathroom in case there's an issue with that bathroom? And today was the first day with kindergartners. And what was nice about today is there was a lot of support for those students to make sure they had a good day. There was also a lot of support for the parents of those kids to make sure that they got through the day as well. And one story that I heard today was there was one of our kindergartners who had kind of a bumpy drop-off and was kind of emotional and upset and the principal took that student and helped them get to class. And the parent called a couple hours later to say, you know, "How's my kid doing?" And the principal said, "He's having a great day." And then he went to check and see how the kid was doing and saw that the kid was actually having a great day. And the joke, you know, was to me was, there's only one answer to that, right? Kids having a great day. Unless they're really not. But I think that was that attitude, that we're going to make sure that every kid's having a great day. At the secondary level, sorry, one other example from fifth grade classroom is, you know, the students are in class, it's just the first week, but they're already working hard and they're already engaging in writing lessons and reflecting on their journey in their classrooms and what's next in their, in their learning. And so one fifth grade class had the students write a letter to themselves about where they are, what they want to work on this year, what about their goals. And so they were completing that assignment and the teacher's going to file them away. It was called the time capsule assignment. And they're going to be handed those back at the end of the year and see kind of how they did. So those are just a couple examples of what's happening in our elementary schools. Secondary, students are coming in, they're excited to reconnect with their friends, see what everyone was up to over the summer. They're learning their classes, in a lot of cases, they're learning their new schools and, you know, where are their classes? And how can they get there and not be late and make it within the five-minute passing period? In high schools, certainly this is an opportunity for our older students, the 11th or 12th graders, to mentor the ninth graders and ensure that they have a smooth start to the year. So each high school has some system for that, whether it's Link Crew or the ASB or other leadership groups that help the ninth graders assimilate. And one example at Eastlake High School is the students who are part of the Link Crew had T-shirts that had a wolf on it and it said, "Raised by Wolves." And that's how they go about their important work of making sure that the new students have a lot of support and mentors to make sure that they get what they need to be raised as part of their family.
And that's because Eastlake are the wolves, just in case anybody is wondering about that, right? Okay.
But it's awesome, no matter how you cut it.
I appreciate that. So those are just some examples of the experiences that students had at the elementary and secondary level.
Hi, I'm Sue Ann Sullivan, Director of School Support for the Redmond Learning Community. And there are a lot of things that go on, starting in the summer, to prepare for a successful school year. One of the very first things we do is have a new administrator orientation, the last two days of July, all of our newest administrators come in. And we have two days of intensive orientation, training, professional development for them. And that's hosted by the DSS, John Holman and Stephen Bryant, our Director of Professional Learning. On August 1st, all of our administrators return and then there's about three weeks where we have meetings, on and off during that time. They have time to get their schools ready and spend time in the schools, but also there's a lot of professional development and meetings and planning taking place then. August 17th through the 25th this year was the Educator Introduction Academy, what we call EIA, for all of our new zero-year teachers, intensive training. Then August 28th to September 1st this year was our Leap Week for staff, which was our professional development in schools, led by our principals. And then September 5th was our first day of school for grades one through 12. And then today was our very first day of school for kindergartners.
So we know that one of the most important things we need to do is that help students transition, not only into school but between levels. And knowing that the systems we put into place to help them transition will help them to be much more successful. We provide a variety of supports as students transition. One of them is a two-week jumpstart for kindergarten at our Title I schools. Sue Ann mentioned, and I know Matt gave you a story about kindergarten, very successful this year, the family connection meetings for all kindergarten families meet just prior to the start of the school year. Building those relationships with that teacher has really, feedback has been great from administrators that parents are transitioning well with allowing their kindergartens to go into the classrooms. In the secondary schools, things like fifth graders visiting the middle school in the spring, sixth and ninth grade students have orientation, events, tours, and assemblies. I know Matt gave you some examples there as well, of really utilizing senior leadership, or just leadership in general in school, schools to help those kids transition, build relationships, understand systems and processes to be most successful. It's going to be a great 2017-18 school year for everybody. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. We've, I've personally heard very little in terms of disaster stories from first day and so it has been a smooth start to the year. Let's keep it rolling. Thank you again. I know it takes a lot of preparation to make something look effortless, so this is a big deal. All right.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yes. Okay. So next we come to public comment. I didn't see anyone sign in on that. Is there anybody, Bob, come on up. I'll give you your, yeah. Turn the mic on and you've got your three minutes. And as you know how to do this, I will not give you the preamble. Go for it.
I'm tired today, I was doing a lot of walking and hiking. You got the email I sent you about the walking school buses? And I'm from the Redmond school area, so. And I came upon this, I think the concept's really good and I'm almost sure that you've already talked about this and Tracy's gone over it and I think there's been a pilot study with the city of Redmond and it seemed, I don't know if it came from the, you looked at it from the top down or if you've ever considered going from the roots up, grassroots level? Because I don't think it's really worked that I know of. And we've, apparently we have four complete walking schools and it would be nice to be able to get a little bit more walking to them. I think, I wasn't quite sure if when you tried the pilot study before, if the apps were available. And I can't ask you that tonight because this isn't a time for me just to talk. But if you would, if you hadn't considered that, would you please do that? Look at those apps. I think there's a lot of, on the website, I gave you one in the mail. Because I think in our high-tech society, you know, applications, we can do it here in Redmond and Kirkland and everywhere, we're all, you know, technology people. So I think it's doable, but I think we probably need to start at the grassroots level. And I just wrote the PTA program person and asked her if she was interested in it. Because possibly if you could get a small group of parents that were interested in maybe going through the PTA to find those parents, maybe this thing could kick off. And it might only take just one group in one of the four schools to get people saying, "Hey, this is cool, you know, this is a good networking event and, you know, we can learn from this." Cassandra Sage on Facebook said that she thought it would be a good networking opportunity to get to know each other and for childcare and emergency care contacts. That was on Facebook. And anyway, so another lady said that it's been used in Japan and it works even when there's an earthquake, you know, they're able to exit out instead of having to wait for the bus to come by. So I was just over, I've got, I live right next to Horace, man, I don't know how much time do I have? Okay.
Well, thank you, Bob. And for this one, if there's one thing that I am confident of, it's that telling people they need to use buses is not the most effective approach to it. But I know parents have expressed an interest and if you go to the local PTA, that you might be able to sell a PTA on it. We're in high season for the first meeting that everybody shows up to for the PTAs. And this is sort of crazy idea that just might work. You just need to get out and sell it to them. I am certain that we can't tell them to do it, but it could be done as a grassroots measure. So, anyway, thank you for the suggestion. Okay, so with that, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director La Liberty, seconded by Director Bliesner. Dr. Pierce, will you please pull the board?
Nancy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Siri?
Yes.
Okay. Will you please review the donations?
I am happy to review the donations. If you turn to tab five, we have a number of very generous donations tonight totaling $28,988 rounding up to the nearest dollar. We have a $2,539 donation from Lake Washington Schools Foundation to Muir Elementary to purchase library books. Another donation from Lake Washington Schools Foundation to Lake Washington High School in the amount of $1,433 to support robotics. And just a quick note here, you know, these are just two examples of some of the programs that the foundation is supporting. So again, we really appreciate everything that they do to benefit our students and appreciated having them here tonight. We've got a $5,031 donation from Albert Einstein PTSA to Einstein Elementary to support outdoor education and field trips. $4,630 from Juanita Elementary PTA to Juanita Elementary to provide outdoor education stipends and outdoor ed bus transportation. $6,930 from John Muir Elementary's PTSA to Muir Elementary to purchase a site license for Dreambox. $2,295 from Eastlake Women's Basketball to Eastlake High School to provide extra hours for summer basketball coaching. $8,102 from the Juanita Rebels Booster Club to Juanita High School to purchase football uniforms. And $2,000 from Aerojet Rocket Dine to Tesla STEM High School to purchase classroom supplies. So again, all total tonight, $28,988 in donations.
As always? As always, that's a phenomenal level of support. Thank you to all the groups and who help us get off to a running start each year. Okay. Our next agenda is the program report, so it's back to Dr. Pierce.
Great. So as you know, last year we started a process of doing an annual program report. These are very short presentations, just 10 minutes long, to provide some highlights to the board and to the community about a particular program. So tonight we actually are off with preschool and special education. So Mike Van Orden, who's our Associate Superintendent, Student Academic Success Services, is here tonight to do the presentation. Again, not a comprehensive study session kind of report, but more of a high-level, brief, 10-minute report to just bring you up to speed on some highlights for the year in terms of enrollment and program changes and so forth. So, I'm just filling in some words while Mike brings up the presentation. And I'm sure it's going to be on our screen any second now, and there it is. Okay. So what we also do with these presentations is just try to make a connection between an executive limitation or an end result report. So preschool and special education connect directly with student learning environment and academic program on the EL side. And on the ER side, they really connect to all parts of content knowledge and skills and attributes. On the academic program side specifically, the executive limitation states that we will have instructional programs that address the needs of all students. So in particular, as we look at preschool and special education, that's what we're focused on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike and he'll take us through the presentation.
So we are going to spend about 10 minutes on each preschool and special ed. Before we get into preschool, I did want to just take a moment to give you an update. As you know, we mentioned last week, we made some adjustments to our start and end times because of transportation so that we can ensure every kid, not only in preschool but in all of our schools, had access to transportation each day. So we have been working closely with parents. Paul Vine in Special Services has been making direct phone calls, answering every email as soon as it comes in, working to find options. So some, in some cases, it's been as simple as changing from the morning session to the afternoon or vice versa, or looking at placement. And then transportation is working right now to accommodate those. We also met with staff members to make some adjustments and talk about how we can support them in the challenge that they're facing as we all work together to make sure that we can get kids to school. And so we just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that there have been some challenges, but also we're looking forward. We're starting preschool in a couple days on Thursday. So as we're talking about preschool, as you know, we want to just give you a big picture overview of our different types of preschool programs, knowing that every single one is important and serves the need of getting kids ready to go into our K through 12 system and provides lots of things, including academics, social-emotional, behavior, family connections, and really make a huge world of difference for our kids. So starting with Head Start Preschool, which is a federally funded program, targeting mostly to students who are at the poverty level or just below, about 90% of the spots are slated for that. And then about 10% of the spots are slated for students who have other challenges and in some cases, that's students with special needs. And so you can see in our program information up here, we have about 71 students in 2016, 17, and a couple more this year. And then some students who have IEPs that we've identified that are being served mostly through push-in services in that program. This is a point in time, so for right now, though, we may have some students that are identified later in the year. Those programs are funded or staffed at 19 students for two teachers, a teacher and an assistant teacher. And so we're running those programs at Bell &amp; Dickinson. Then the next preschool program we have is Ready Start. And that's a combination program that includes typically developing students as well as students with special needs. That's funded through a host of different programs, local, federal funds. And again, getting kids ready for school, but also thinking about all of those other services that wrap around. So providing support for disabilities, getting parents connected, health and nutrition are all part of our Ready Start preschool program. And so as you see here, our enrollment includes of 240 students, 121 with individualized education programs. And the way we deliver instruction in those programs is we have two teachers. So we have a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher partnering together to provide quality instruction for all of the kids. And what a wonderful model to have kids working together, side by side, and learning and coming into our schools. Then we have a Ready Start Program Learning Center, really targeted for students with really specific special needs. And because of that, a much smaller ratio of teachers to students, so six to one in this case, with two paraeducators. Again, the idea here is to really meet the needs of students in that program. So these might be communication needs or cognitive needs or really helping students who have pretty significant disabilities. And so, again, about 40 to 50 students each year served by this program. And then a really wonderful, not that they're all, not wonderful, but a wonderful program we have that we've been working on is our SNAPs program. It's a program that was developed in partnership and around a model that was created at the University of Washington with the idea that when you have students with autism, having additional instructional time can make a world of difference. And so shooting for a target of about 20 hours per week can really have a positive impact on kids. So we have a group of kids who attend Ready Start for a portion of the day and SNAPs for a portion of the day and that's how we get that time in. And then the SNAPs time is really targeted and focused on preparing kids with a whole host of skills, as you see up there, functional communication, social interactions, play, imitation engagement. So again, wonderful program, they're all wonderful programs that serve the needs of kids in our system and get them ready to come into our K programs and first grade that we were just talking about this morning. We also know that many of our students in our programs have very specific needs and so we push in and do pull-out services for a whole host of areas. We have speech-language pathologists, OTs, physical therapists. These are for students who qualify for IEPs. And then in some cases, there's very specific SLP programs that are just, that run as itinerant I also want to mention that in preschool, oftentimes when you think about preschool, you may have a particular mindset about what it is. So is it academics? Is it social-emotional? Is it physical? Well, really preschool's all of the above. We know that there are all sorts of things that kids need as they're growing and developing at these ages. And so there's language and literacy, there's math, there's science that kids are participating in, arts, as well as some of the other skills that they need as they're developing. So physical development, motor skills, both large and fine, the social-emotional is part of it as well. And there's curriculum that goes with this and standards that go with it that we can make sure that every kid has regardless of the program they're in. We also have assessments that allow us to check our progress and see how our kids are doing. So in our Head Start program, we use assessments that come with the GOLD program, that's both curriculum and assessment. And you can see across the board, as you look at these assessments, there's similarities in many of them in the terms of the big buckets of things that we're assessing, from social, emotional, physical, cognitive, to kind of those literacy, math, science, art skills, those content knowledge types of skills. So the Teaching Strategies GOLD Assessment was, we use with Head Start, collects some data and that's used in program. We don't necessarily disaggregate that or prepare it as a district, though that's something we're thinking about and looking at. In our preschool, so Ready Start programs, we have our progress reports and so teachers gather information about how students are doing over the course of their preschool experience. And then for students who have an IEP, we use a measure called the Child Outcome Summary, which allows us to do two things. One is see how students are performing in relation to typically developing peers at a given point in time and then how much growth they're making over time. And so I want to share with you just a brief snapshot of some of that data that we collect over time in the three areas that you saw on the previous slide. So for example, when we look at social-emotional, we can gather information about how students are doing in terms of growth, but also how they're doing in terms of their typically developing peers. And if we see gaps, that tells us maybe how we might want to approach support for kids, not only in preschool, but as they move into kindergarten. So as teachers are thinking about transitioning students from a preschool program into a kindergarten program, there, we're having meetings, transition meetings, where they're looking at information like this to say, "Okay, we have kids that maybe need some work on social-emotional skills and there's, there's a gap. We're seeing growth, but they're still not close to typically developing peers." That might be something we want to work on, not only for program, but for individual students as they make the transition. Same thing for acquisition and use of knowledge and skills, so some of those academic skills we were talking about are pre-academic skills. And then also using appropriate behavior to meet their needs. And so again, we can look at those kind of three areas, knowing that those are all precursors to success as kids move through their educational path and use that to target specific ways of supporting them. The other thing we want to mention that's so important in preschool, as well as when kids move into K through 12, is that parent engagement. At the preschool level, parent engagement is really kind of at the core. So we have parents participating in parent-teacher conferences. We have, as part of the IEP process, as you know, very required, very active, but also required, parent involvement. We have lots of parent volunteers in our programs, parent education nights, and then at the Head Start programs, there's actually a required parent component. So there's monthly parent meetings, parent funds, it's built into the program. Really with the idea that parents work side by side with preschool teachers as teachers of their kids and you want to have that relationship for kids to develop and grow. So that's our preschool program, so I'm going to now transition into special ed, or did we want to, Tracy, do we want to stop or do we want to wait until the end?
Well, that was perfect because that's right, right at nine minutes.
Thank you.
So did anybody have any questions or comments about preschool before we transition into special education?
Well, I just, I'm, this, on page 11, there's just this huge dropdown, relatively speaking, on both of those charts. Do you have a reason? Just different cohort, different assessment?
That's, yeah, Paul was chatting with the teachers in those programs because the data doesn't come out until February, so you see the 2015-16, so that was a group of kids that was a few years So you see the 2015-16, so that was a group of kids that was a few years back. And the idea was that there did seem to be a group of kids that had more significant needs.
More needs.
Yeah, so then we also looked at, well, how does the growth of our students look in relation to their peers? And so we were looking at kind of those two points in time. If we saw both of those dropping, we'd be very concerned. So if we had students that weren't performing in relation to typically developing peers, and they weren't making growth, you have one approach. If you have students who aren't performing in relation to typically developing peers, but are showing growth, a different approach. So we keep an eye on both of them to inform program support for kids as they progress.
Good, thank you.
Mark also had a question.
Yeah, how formal of a process, and this actually, since you had IP in the preschool, but also then would go to special ed, how active in the preschool area are we in assessing communication skills and promoting the idea of having AAC start as early as preschool, with the idea being that the more communication skills they have early on, the less behavioral problems they will have, because basically the behavior comes through communications program?
Yeah, so communication is one of the core elements that is taught throughout, but very much so in our programs with students with IEPs. And it's something that's assessed. So it's not only a part of the social, emotional skills, but it's a content area skill, as well as behavior. The behavior is actually, how do you act and communicate in ways that get your needs met? And so sometimes that's physical, sometimes that's verbal, sometimes that's relational. So that's all communication to meet your needs, whether it's to get something you want, to interact with somebody in a positive way. So that's all kind of unpacked in these assessments.
Well, no, I guess my point was, how much are we trying to encourage the use of AAC in that group?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And with the idea being that the more we use the AAC, the better the students will have a chance to develop.
Yeah, right, something I can...
Mike, could you flip back a few slides here, and one more, maybe, one more? Sorry, one more, keep going, I'll say stop. Like this sort of communication, you know, I want...
Right.
But you're asking about like specific devices?
Right, I'm talking about the primarily iPads, this type of, that's very elementary.
Right.
And it's not really, well, won't get to the point of how they can help communicate with each other. The idea of being able to actually construct a sentence.
Right.
The idea of being able to actually, an action word, "I want." But with the idea of being able to construct the thoughts. And the more they do that, in fact, what I'd like to guess, what I'm getting at is, an assessment at that early stage, when we're at the Ready-Start, or even earlier, if you will, of how to assess the need, how AAC would help that student. Even if that student perhaps may drop that AAC by first or second grade, thank God, that'd be a miracle, to be quite frank. But the idea being if they can start off early enough, and to encourage the parents to say, look, we're doing this because we think that your child will develop in a better track AAC. I find that, what is it, there's a ratio, they say that for every dollar you spend in early years, you save six bucks in secondary. And it's not the idea of saving the money, it's the idea of actually improving their lives. Because I can tell you that I've seen a number of students that would have benefited from that in their early years, and you wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had the problems they've had in high school.
Yeah, something to...
Can we follow up on that and see what additional?
Just the idea, perhaps, looking at an idea of a program, perhaps.
Yeah.
So, following up on that to some extent, the SNAPs program, is that capacity limited? Or is that something where we're reaching out and finding these kids and taking as all of them for SNAPs?
Yeah, we have a certain, we have a certain capacity that we haven't, we don't reach, or we don't meet. That doesn't mean that we haven't identified kids that would benefit from it. So there's outreach through IP, there's child find, so we are required to identify students who have special needs and disabilities and IEPs. There's also outreach that's done. So I think from the IEP side, special education side, I think there's a very intentional outreach effort. And then on the non-SAPS, the Ready-Start, there's pretty high demand as well for typically developing students.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
One other question. Knowing that the WAKIDS is occurring, so how is that information being used at the preschool?
I think it's, from what I understand, and I can get more if I'm not on, I think the idea is to match the preschool assessments and see how they correlate with the kindergarten assessments, and are they good predictors? And do they give you good information, or do they give you different information, or do we need other kinds? If that makes sense. So I think, I know Tim and Paul have been having some conversations about how do we kind of connect those two?
Because I know, I was just thinking of the ends results, that we have those initial ones, looking at WAKIDS, and then you can see some of those differences. It'd be interesting, asked you, how do we impact preschool when looking at those pieces?
And one thing we've talked about, well, we don't have a specific way to do it yet, but probably could, is it would be interesting to know how to disaggregate the, our preschool, kids who came through our preschool and their WAKIDS results compared to private preschool and their WAKIDS results.
For different state.
Sure, or yeah, just not our preschool.
We could at least match our preschool, if they came into, we could get their WAKIDS score, we would be able to track that cohort.
Like, yes, like our current, we know which of our kindergarteners, we don't have it in a data system, but we could figure out which of our kindergarteners participated in our district preschool.
Right.
And they could look to see what their WAKIDS results were, and then start to...
Yeah, backwards.
Okay, thanks, Mike, we will move on, and 10 minutes on spin.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes, I think I'm close. So I want to start our special education report, just reminding you, we conducted a program review of special education that was initiated by our special education department with the Urban Collaborative. And there were seven priority areas that were identified as part of that process, and are really kind of forming the basis for the work that we're doing in special education. And as you know, we've put together our teaching and learning intervention and special education divisions, departments in our division. And so we are actually, even as recently as last week, working and talking about lots of overlap in terms of intervention and teaching, and what's happening in special education, really intentionally around many of these areas. So as I'm going through the presentation tonight, I'll point out, kind of at a high level, some of our efforts, in particular, as related to these priority areas. And then we'll have more opportunities throughout the year in ER reports and information that we share, so we can go in more detail if you need more. As always, it's good to start out with just kind of what's the lay of the land or the big picture. And so as you look across birth to three, all the way up to 18 to 21-year-old services, and that really is the gamut of our special education program, you can see that we serve thousands of kids. And we are, I wouldn't say necessarily outpacing or outgrowing, our enrollment is roughly about the same. We have kids that come in with IEPs, we have kids we identify, we have kids that leave the system. So these are snapshots in time. As I was talking to Barb, overall, it looks like our special education enrollment is pretty even. And so this is a snapshot in time that could, again, as kids move out of the system or move into the system. But it gives you kind of a big picture sense of our programs. The other thing I wanted to touch on, as we go into the program review, is to be thinking about how are we constantly taking the things that I'll share in our different special ed programs and services, and how are we monitoring that and making sure that we're keeping track and thinking about how do we continuously improve? And so this is some data that we gathered as part of the program review, and that we're looking at specifically around the idea that for many kids with an IEP, being in a general education setting is really a way to get higher levels of achievement and get access to all sorts of opportunity. It's not always the appropriate place. In some cases, very specifically designed instruction in a different setting makes sense. But we know the more kids that have access to general education content and instruction, that could be a good indicator of how we're doing. And so in the program review we did, one of the recommendations was this idea of delivery models and co-teaching. And we know that if we put two teachers into a classroom and we have students with special education and students who are typically developing, that we can provide services in that setting and increase the percentage of time they're in a general education setting. And so that's a way we can monitor to see that we're on track. Similarly, we can look at things like how students are represented in our programs. And so we see this as an area we want to look into more deeply, particularly around our equity work and how students are represented with IEPs. So for example, our students, and you see kind of the dotted line is the line for all of our students, the representation level for all of our students. So you might say some groups have more or are overrepresented in our IEPs, and some maybe are about where they, the all category is, and some are higher. And so, again, this is an area that we could look at to say, is there something that we might want to be digging into and doing more around? And this is something we're, I believe we're looking at putting into our dashboard, if I'm not mistaken, as well. We're also looking at academic measures. And so as early as kindergarten, we're looking at how our students versus, our students who receive special education services and those who don't are performing. And this is an opportunity, again, for us to think about, how do we bring those priority areas and those strategies we identified in our program review to bear on students and student needs? And so here we have an example where we can think about intervention services, and how do we provide really high-quality reading and literacy instruction for all students? So that has been intervention, but if a student who has an IEP could benefit from that intervention, that would be a wonderful thing to do as well. And so having Kelly and Paul working side by side on that is a really wonderful opportunity for us. And as kids get older, we also want to keep an eye on how they're doing as they go through time. And so looking at how students do in SBA and in math are areas that we're going to look at closely. And again, as an example of how we're taking some of the work from that program review, we are having a group of teachers that are going to be looking very specifically at math at the secondary level, and how we use existing curriculum resources that we've shared in the adoption presentations in a special education setting, and then take some of the work that's been happening in Intervention and Safety Net at the secondary level, and translate that into special education services, and then constantly be working on monitoring these results to see that we start to have upticks and we start to see improved outcomes for kids. Ultimately, our goal is to get our students graduating. And so that's where we'll kind of ultimately be working towards, is making sure that our kids are getting to graduation and having success. And so you'll see ideally, information related to this more specifically in our ER reports. So as I mentioned, the programs, I want to give you a brief overview of our general education programs and services that we provide. We always like to start out by saying, all of our students start as general education students. And so we want to make sure that we kind of have that mindset. We know that in our general education classes, we have students with IEPs and who need accommodations and modifications to be successful. And so we have a variety of services that we push into classes. We're also starting to do more work around the idea of co-teaching, so that we don't have to be pulling students out of general education settings as frequently, or when it's appropriate to have them in a general education setting and we can provide a co-teaching model. That could be something really powerful, again, part of our program review. And at the same time, we know that sometimes kids do need a different setting or different services. And so we do have resource room settings in each of our schools. This is for students who have services that are needed related very specifically to their IEPs, and there are a certain portion of their day that they need those services for. They also are in their general education classes for the majority of the day in these cases. And so you can see just kind of a sense of the enrollment sizes. But also, something to point out, you'll notice, is the new ratio. And so again, part of our contract negotiations, but also the resources portion of our program review is to look at how we allocate resources to support students. And so having a smaller student-to-teacher ratio benefits kids, it benefits teachers, it allows us to provide services that really support our students, and something we can track to see if it's making a difference. Then we have our wonderful learning and transition centers. And so you can see some of the schools that we are running those programs in, learning centers, elementary, transition centers at the secondary level, much lower class size ratios, again, because we have students with very specific learning needs and disabilities that require very individualized types of instruction. And you can again see, the ratios have changed a little bit there, just as they did in the resource room setting. So from 12 to 1 to 8 in K5, and 10 to 1 in 612, enrollment's about the same as we've had in the past.
Mike, I just want to chime in here, that in addition to enhancing the staffing ratio and putting a significant investment there, our teachers also now have caseload management period. And that was part of the contract negotiations as well. So all teachers have a planning period, and then our special education students have a caseload management period. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you want to spend just 30 seconds explaining that?
Yeah, so the idea there is, there are lots of things that go with an IEP that are more than prepping for a class. So obviously, you have specially designed instruction, so you need planning time to get ready for that. And all of our teachers get planning time. So caseload management time is for all the things that are related to an IEP. So that could be meeting with a Gen. Ed teacher, that could be parent meetings, that could be working through IEPs, that could be kind of helping teachers who might need additional support, meeting with IAS. There's lots of different things that are related to those services that are provided for students with IEPs that take more than planning for the day-to-day instruction. And so we're really seeing it as a value that can make a world of difference for our kids. And again, it's also, one of the other benefits we're hearing about is it's making, like Washington, a very desirable place to work, because people are seeing that we're kind of acknowledging the needs of our special education teachers. And we were able to get teachers in a very hard hiring time, I think as a result of this, I heard from a few districts. The other thing I wanted to point out here, as we were talking about the program review, we have, we've been working on assistive technology as part of our program review, and we just had some efforts with an assistive technology team that was formed this year to bring the Lenovo devices that used to be part of our Dibbles and repurpose that, and put them in our learning centers and transition centers to aid in communication. And they've been loaded with technology and software very specifically related to learning centers and transition centers. So again, we're constantly thinking about, how do we continue to provide improvements that were identified as part of our priority areas? And one of the outcomes from that work was to get this team that's working on assistive technology. And it's been really wonderful to see already, I mean, we're in the, just the beginning stages of school, and they've already been communicating with people in the field about support that's available in terms of assistive tech. We also have intervention centers, again, very much targeted on a specific need, in this case, behavior and emotional supports. They are, again, found in each of our schools that you'll notice up here, so Redmond, Rose Hill, Evergreen, Kamaiakon, East Lake, and Waneda. Class sizes, class size ratios reduced a little bit again. And again, those September numbers, they fluctuate. So we want to be careful not to draw too many conclusions from going from 65 to 86, because they go up and down throughout the year. One thing I did want to mention here, and again, thinking about how do we start making some connections between the work of special education and general education and intervention, is there's a real strong connection between behavior and academic performance. And one of our areas that we work on, as we look at different multi-tiered systems of support over the next few years, is how do you combine academics and behavior together and think about how they relate to each other? And so we see a real opportunity from some amazing work that's happening in our intervention centers, thinking about how do we support academic behaviors and behavior, social, emotional at the same time. And so that'll be part of our work this year, as we look at MTSS, which you've heard about through our program review. One of our shining stars, again, lots of shining stars in our district, but our Transition Academy. This is a photo from last year's graduation, you'll probably remember. An amazingly successful program, so much so that we've started a second academy this year, a little bit smaller to get started, get our feet underneath us and get running. But we are looking at students who are in that 18 to 21-year-old, we're providing services, providing learning as well as work experience. And we were able to get our program at Kamaiakon started this year with Mark, who's getting that program running, and then some amazing teachers, Taylor and Cynthia and Sean, are carrying the torch for our Transition Academy one. So more to come on that, but again, really exciting work that's happening there. And again, we want to recognize, just as we did in preschool, there are lots of services that go in addition to what we mentioned in the programs themselves, speech and language, occupational therapy, vision, physical, vision, assistive tech. And again, here, as we look at assistive tech, we're constantly thinking about, how do we continue to approve that? We were just looking, our assistive tech team is working on some software information right now that will convert text to speech, and it's available to all teachers, not just special education teachers. And so what they're doing is they're providing information and guidance and training around that, and supporting teachers in its use, so that we can improve communication outcomes for kids, as well as reading outcomes for kids. And so all of the, as I mentioned, we're constantly thinking about, how do we continue to improve really high-quality services? And so that is where I'd like to wrap up tonight, is some of our program improvement efforts that we'll be working on. Each of these came out of our program review. And so I mentioned many of these throughout the evening tonight, just some quick highlights. One of our main areas of work will be looking at, how do we bring all the different types of support that exists in our system, and then identifying what supports might we additionally need that really improve outcomes for kids? And that includes thinking not only about academics and behavior as separate things, but thinking about how they're related to one another, thinking about ways that we can change our delivery model. can change our delivery models to provide those supports, so examples like co-teaching, ways to think about the curriculum and the way we teach, like universal design for learning. So, multi-tiered system support really is an umbrella that brings lots of different elements together to think about intervention in a very holistic way. And so, we'll be starting that work, we're recruiting right now, as of today, and we'll be continuing that work throughout the year. We're also identifying supplemental dyslexia curriculum and assessments and are planning on developing training for teachers. We've actually hired a staff person to help us work on this, and we're making a commitment to have that identified and in place. Mentioned the guidance procedures for assistive tech, where there's already outreach happening, and we're going to continue that work with our, our special education team to continue to support and bolster assistive technology and identify additional technology we might need. And finally, we have a goal of increasing parent and family engagement and restructuring a little bit the way we interact with our parents to make them more as partners, as opposed to just sharing information or giving information. And so, Paul is working with an advisory committee that will be actually asking for parent input around our strategic items in special education that were part of the program review, to actually have parents working side-by-side with us in those areas. So, we're excited about all of these areas. We think they'll make a difference in terms of those outcomes that you saw tonight, not only here, but in our study session. And so, we'll be tracking those to see if these things are making a difference for kids.
Starting with the co-teaching, I know that we've been playing with this for a while. I mean, we had some pilots and so forth. How many teachers do we have, or how many classrooms do we have that are using co-teaching in elementary, middle school and high school levels?
That is a great question. That is our first action item. We were just talking about that in our team meeting there today. So, what we're going to do is, we're having a special ed, I think we're looking at an associate director that's actually going to identify which teachers, which grade levels, which content areas in special ed, as well as the teachers they're co-teaching with as a first step. Do, that's just what's out there. Then we're going to do some kind of more qualitative work around, how is it going? Is it working? Is it effective? We'll start looking at some data, just to do kind of a system audit, what's in place. And then our plan is to start then going, okay, what does good, effective co-teaching look like? In places where we don't see that happening, we want to provide training and support. Places where it's working well, we want to expand it. And so, we'll be working with teachers that are currently co-teaching to kind of bring them along in that training, but also kind of capitalize on the good work they're doing with the goal of ultimately potentially adding some more capacity and being careful that we're not putting co-teaching in every place for every single thing because it's not always appropriate.
And how many do we have in place?
So, that's, right now, that's part of the work that we're doing. My sense is that there's something happening in pretty much every secondary school, and not all, but in quite a significant number of them. Elementary, not as, it's not as common. And again, it's been, in the special education realm, it's been kind of more driven by schools and teachers. ELL is another example where we've kind of driven it programmatically and said, okay, here's what we need to have and here's what the ratios look like. So, our goal is to kind of start to tighten up what's happening in special education, not to say we're going to limit great things that are happening, but to say, we want a good, effective approach to co-teaching that really meets our needs.
As soon as we have those concrete numbers, we can provide that all up with the board.
Because I'm not seeing that that mentioned secondary from what I've been observing. Teacher ratios, how many of those are actually FTEs as opposed to percentage teachers?
The teacher ratio...
Yeah, the teacher ratios, you're talking about the teacher ratios we've got. When we start counting those teacher ratios, are we talking bodies, are we talking full FTEs?
Oh, I get it. So, is that, for example, at one school, is that a full-time teacher?
Right. My son has two-thirds one teacher and a one-third one teacher. Anyway.
Wherever, so, wherever possible, we staff schools with one teacher, but there's often, like you say, additional students that drive additional FTEs, so it might be a portion of 1.0. We try to combine teachers to give them full contracts. So, we do have some teachers that are kind of an itinerant approach where they might be teaching a portion of their contract at one school and a portion at another. I can, I have that data if it'd be helpful to share.
Because to me, it means more knowing how many of those, that ratio is, are actually FTEs as opposed to one-third to two-thirds, so forth. What do we know about para-r ratios?
Para, same thing. I mean, ideally, with a para, you can plug in hours, and so, it's, there's a little bit more flexibility with para's in many cases, just because they're the hours that they can work, so four to six, or with a teacher, we're always, to get, recruit teachers, it's really nice to get a 1.0. That means sometimes we divide them up. But again, we have, we have by school how we're staffed, so I don't know if that'd be something we would want to share or I can pass along. I hear what you're saying, there's an ideal of having kind of a continuous, yeah, a continuous teacher for each class.
How many did we increase this year, teachers in para's?
So, for teachers, I think we were 20-plus. And part of that was the staffing ratio, part of that was turnover.
And how many are we lacking?
Right now, we have two place, two positions where we're still looking. We have substitutes in, we have, I think, two to three agency hires, and then the rest we have filled with some combination.
I guess my point is, of the schools that have the parcels, what are we doing to ensure that we could actually have one teacher per classroom? Because you've got, in some schools, you've got four classrooms and three teachers.
And so, again, it's, school by school, we work to try to make sure that we have people there that are teaching the classroom, that are qualified to teach, that are working together. Again, just based on the size of schools and the number of kids, sometimes those combinations look a little bit different from school to school.
And because of the shortage of numbers, you're now, in some schools, you're combining sensory kids with the, sensory kids with the, kids with behavioral problems. And that's a problem.
Why don't we follow up with you individually, Mark? Because it sounds like you might have some specific concerns.
Also, how many, how are we supplementing the para's with the, as far as total numbers with the BMAX and the basic beginning people?
You know, that I don't have off the top of my head, but again, we can, we can pull as much or as specific a type of data you need.
You talked about the introduction of AAC. Are we monitoring the usage of the AAC? It's one thing to have it in class, it's another thing for the, find out that, because it ain't, because some of those AAC devices, you can take a look at the end of the day, and it says zero uses, zero uses, zero uses.
Yeah. And that's one of the charges of our guidelines and procedures. So, right now, we're pushing out a lot of information and training, but the other thing we want to do is make sure we're using it effectively and it's making a difference.
Yeah, I mean, it's, one thing to have it in the classroom, it's another thing actually to use it. If it's not being used, then it's, wasn't worth the money.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, that actually is a bigger theme that I'm interested in talking about, is these improvement efforts do seem responsive to the report, but, for example, if you're adopting guidance and procedures for the use of assistive technology, what's the evaluation? How do you measure that that adoption has been done? And that's one that might actually be easier than the one I'm, the other one that I'm interested in, which is, you know, if we're adopting supplemental dyslexia curricula and assessments, throughout the SPED presentation, it's, I find myself wrestling with, how do we evaluate success of the program for the students when there are many different tiers of student in there? I haven't seen things broken out by the performance of students who are on alternative assessments versus students on standard assessments. So, really, how are we going to know that these supplemental curricula or AACs are being, how do we, how do we evaluate their performance?
It's interesting because we've, you know, grappled with these same questions, even to the level of, you know, is there a way we can aggregate whether students are meeting IEP goals? Because when it comes to special education and you're talking about individualized education programs, it's very student-specific, right? Of, so, so gauging whether or not that individual student's program is successful for that student is something we do grapple with doing at a high scale.
Well, and how do you make sure that the IEPs are being followed?
Right. And the personal thing, if you can measure it.
X, Y, and Z that it's supposed to be doing, and X, Y, and Z never appear to be on the page of the IEP.
Right. But, Mark, your point is, is taken, but if you, if you make, if we make that a piece of the evaluation, it gives us an opportunity to really change behavior.
And that evaluation, you need to have parent input on that.
What I might suggest is, we still have some study session topics to schedule in for the year. And, you know, we've had some pretty significant study session time on special education last year, and if, you know, the board would like to schedule some more in-depth time, you know, we can take some of these questions, we can prepare, because again, this, this level of presentation is really, really high-level, 10 minutes, and so, I appreciate all the questions that aren't answered, that you're asking that aren't answered in this presentation because that's not really what we've, how we've tailored the presentation. But I, I'd suggest we schedule in a study session.
It was the first opportunity we had to ask the questions.
Yeah. And I agree, it's worthwhile, this is an important year to focus on it as the implementation year. Now, Eric's been extremely patient, but are you also, okay, Eric, go for it.
I have two questions. One's, I'll just, I was going to ask the softball first. I'll do that. The Transition Academy, the second Transition Academy, could you tell me more about how that, why that was started, where we're drawing students from, why a second one?
Again, I think it's just how successful the program itself is. Having programs that are in different regions can have benefits to them. So, just this morning, for example, we were talking about access to transportation services, being closer to home, businesses and community agencies that are close by that can partner. It's spreading the wealth of some really amazing teachers and not having them all concentrated. Part of it might also be due to the facility itself that we're leasing for Transition Academy 1 and growing capacity. I think those are the main ones that I'm aware of.
Okay. May I ask a second question?
Softball's allowed, go for it.
Different, different topic. The, I guess, one of the program, I can't remember, the very last slide, there's four, it wasn't the very last, second to last, four program improvement areas. And I just noted that, well, the first three are actions, the fourth is more of a goal. And you talked about having an advisory committee, but I was, I was curious if there's anything else you could identify right now.
So, part of this group's charge is to say, how do we have parents participating in this work in a meaningful way? The other thing is, the multi-tiered system of supports, the dyslexia curriculum, both will have parents as members of a steering leadership committee that are part of that work, so we're getting that connection as well. But again, really, this is to say, you know what, we need to think about, how do we do family engagement in a meaningful way? Tell us what we're missing. And then that leads to strategic action items that then would be carried out by either that group or other groups in our district. So, I know that's kind of a vague response, but it would be, once we know what we don't know, that would start leading to work.
No, I would agree. And in many ways, this is the hardest of the four because it requires something outside of the district, the parent, the involvement of the parents. So, that sounds like a good first step. Thank you.
And we'll, that definitely falls under the category of, let's work that into a deeper dive when we're not going to be pushing ourselves into the wee hours of the morning. We're not there yet.
It's eight o'clock.
It's eight o'clock now, but we got other stuff to talk about. So, Siri.
Just really quickly, as, as we do the work study session, we could just tie in that back to what the final report was and making sure that that connects fairly clearly as to where those are. I, I'll admit, I'm very excited to see the dyslexia piece on there, knowing the impact that that can have. So, it's great to see that being in. And again, that evaluation is going to be, is what we're doing making a difference and we're succeeding in actually seeing change, and then being able to be nimble enough to make those changes faster. So, we don't wait three years because our kids don't have that time, they don't have that option. So, that'd be the one thing I would say, as we do these improvement efforts, that we do think timeliness and, and nimbleness and being able to shift a little quicker and faster because of it.
So, thank you for that update.
And could I just, just in closing, say, you know, Mike has been in his role now for all of, oh, it's July 1, right? And so, as Associate Superintendent of Student Academic Support Services, you know, bringing in special education intervention services and really putting, to really have the level of focus, as well as teaching and learning in his Division 2, but bringing that all together. So, anyway, I just want to say, you know, Mike's at the point of, you know, really getting in and digging into understand, you know, he hadn't been involved to this level prior, so I just want to compliment you for the work that you're doing so far and also just remind everyone that Mike's new to the position and really getting deep into it to see how we can, you know, address all of the things that you're asking and really make program improvements.
No, I agree. Mike, you've hit the ground running. I just wanted to give you some feedback that I'm getting a lot from, from parents and some frustration levels out there. And what I don't want to see those frustration levels raised to are us losing students, because I know we're losing students, the parents that are taking them out of our system because they aren't getting the services they want. I'm seeing parents lawyering up, and that's another thing we don't want. We'd like to be able to have parents and teachers working together as teams and not as just the receptacles of what you're offering. And so, I want you to think about that as you go into the program, and I really appreciate you throwing yourself in the clink and sinker.
Yeah, thanks. So, our next item on the agenda is Sue's report.
Great. So, I just need a little assistance. Barbara, I'm going to ask you to help me click through the Sue's report tonight. So, put together a brief presentation on the McCleary solution and the state education funding plan and how that intersects with our local funding measures that we're planning for our upcoming levies and bond in February 2018. So, we just need a moment to pull up the presentation and we'll go from there.
Okay. Yeah. It isn't, it's not up here, so, sorry.
I have to appreciate the use of the term "solution."
That's their term.
Oh, 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 sorry. Thank you. I was wondering if that was our...
Loose term.
Yeah, okay. It means what we mean it to mean. All right.
That's what they're calling it. Do you need help finding it?
Let me just get there, hold on. It's a little slow right now.
Okay.
We're still here. Okay, it's, it's...
No, no singing for me.
Who's logged in? I don't have that.
So, sorry for the delay, we'll just, okay.
That was your first week of school.
That's great.
We could have shadow puppets.
Something.
We're experiencing some technical difficulties, just to let the excitement build around this solution.
It took the legislature three sessions, we can at least take five minutes, okay?
I know. Every second feels like an hour.
Okay, 16 minutes time.
Well, you've already gone through it. Again, sorry for the delay. Are we finding it there, okay? Pardon me? I know, you all have it. It's in the, well, we want to be able to show it to our viewers. I don't know.
So, Mike, while we wait for the, the slide deck to come up, I've got just one written comment on slide 19 for you. It's just a, it's a stat nerd that doesn't need to be publicly read. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Were there apologies for that, everybody? And Barbara, thank you for getting that pulled up here. We saw it. Okay, great. So, put together a brief presentation, high-level presentation, on what the legislature's calling the MacLeary solution, or the state education funding plan. So, just to remind everyone, the legislature adopted the final biennial budget, June 30, and we've completed our budget. Work Board approved the budget. The budget's an attempt at meeting the MacLeary requirements in relation to sufficient funding for public education, including staff compensation. Now, you'll recall, the new money that is supposed to come in as part of the MacLeary solution really isn't slated to come in until next year, until 2018. So, they passed the education funding plan, or MacLeary solution, which outlines the long-term funding plan for schools. So that's what I want to focus on tonight. Go ahead, Barbara. So just high level, we want to highlight what are the changes to the state funding plan for schools. Talk briefly about how these changes impact our district, specifically in terms of levies and our upcoming bond and levies. And then, you know, just highlight a couple things that are still not clear, or still not 100% certain. Because it's an education funding plan, we haven't actually seen the new funding come through yet. Okay, so, starting with the state long-term funding plan. So I think sort of the headline here is that we believe the state is providing more funding for basic education, and they're accomplishing this through increasing the state property tax. Districts will still need local funding measures to pay for needs not included as part of the state-funded program of basic education. So that's the headline, and just I want to unpack that a little bit, and what does that actually mean. So, the adjustment to the state property tax, again, it's the effort to fully fund education in the state. Legislature revised and is adjusting the state property tax for the support of common schools, which means all property owners in Washington State pay this rate, and the money funds education across the state. So what does that adjustment look like? In 2017, the state property tax rate was $1.88, is $1.88 per thousand of assessed value. That is changing to $2.70 per thousand of assessed value, beginning in 2018. Again, this is the state property tax rate, so it's an increase of 82 cents per thousand of assessed value. And this is how the state plans to fund basic education for all 295 districts across the state. Nancy?
I think what's important for people to understand is, the state has always funded schools statewide through a property tax. So we have always been paying. It's just that in 2017, it's $1.88, and it's going to go up by almost 100% in order to profit more. But I don't think, I think sometimes people forget, they've always been paying for all the schools in the state into the general fund through our local property tax. And that's the message that I think keeps getting mixed up.
And I just want to add to that, it's not, the property tax is one portion of the total revenue. There's also sales tax and EPNO tax, and so that makes up the whole, you know, the pie is made up of many different revenue sources. And then, out of all those revenue sources, they spend about 49% on public education, on K-12 education.
Exactly. And I just think people have, so this has never paid for all of it, because there's also the other tax sources in our state. But it's always been there. I know the first time I looked at my property tax statement, which was many, 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 many years ago, it was very interesting.
And really lame question, what happens after 2021? Is this just, it's set at 270, and then it goes, floats?
I think it may increase just slightly based on an inflation factor. So...
There's the cap as well.
Right.
Yeah.
So Nancy's absolutely right. This is how, this isn't a fundamental change in how education's been funded. It's increasing the amount of education across the state because the Supreme Court said the legislature was not fully funding basic education. That's the whole MacLeary decision.
And I think part of this is that there are other sources into the general fund. But my understanding is, with the MacLeary solution, it, all the increase is coming through this property tax increase, not through any other increases.
That's correct. That to be the correct case. Okay. Okay. So, you know, where does the money go? Again, it funds education across all Washington State school districts, all 295 school districts. What's the money for? So the money's to fund basic education, including staff salaries associated with basic education. So that's been one of the issues that districts have had to overly rely on local levies to fund basic education, including a significant amount of staff salary associated with basic education. So Article 9 of the Constitution says, "It's a paramount duty of the state to make ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders without distinction or preference on account of race, color, caste, or sex." So funding basic education for all students is the state's constitutional obligation. And this is an effort to address the issue that districts have had to use local levies to fill that gap, including a significant amount of staff salaries. So, the question then becomes, how does that state adjustment, how does that affect our local funding? Or what does it mean in terms of what we need in terms of local funding measures? So that's what this next section is focused on. So, Lake Washington School District levies and bonds fund needs not included as part of the state-funded program of basic education. And new, moving forward, is the fact that the legislature has imposed new limits on maintenance and operations levies, or what we call here in Lake Washington, educational programs and operation levies, which they're referring to as enrichment levies from the legislative. So just to unpack that a little bit, and how those new limits affect us, and what does it mean, we'll go to the next slide. So you've seen this slide before. It's actually from a presentation I shared with PTSA in the spring, and did a Sups' report in the spring, that, you know, here's how school funding's supposed to work in Washington. When you look at basic education, that top row, including staff salaries, and materials, and supplies, and textbooks, and all of the things that are associated with basic education, that's supposed to be funded through, you know, primarily state dollars, and of course, we get some federal dollars for some programs as well. So, in theory, we shouldn't have to use any local dollars to fund basic education. And that's what the state's trying to resolve. In theory. Okay. However, their, basic education, the state's never going to fund needs that we have that fall outside of the definition of basic education. So other needs and priorities, such as athletics and activities, local programs that reflect local priorities, like our new teacher support program, technology, professional development. Sue Ann mentioned in her presentation that we have what we call Leap Week, the five days before students start. That's locally funded. We don't, that's not part of the program of basic education. That's funded through local levy dollars. And so there's many, many needs that we have, and many, many priorities that are not going to be funded from the state. And so we are still going to need EPNO levy, our educational programs and operations levy, our capital levy, which funds facility and technology, and our bonds, of course, because we don't get any money from the, from the state for new classrooms, or new buildings, or facility upgrades. We rely on our capital facilities levy for that, and of course, our bonds to build new schools. Now, we might get a little tiny bit of state assistance, construction assistance funding, once we pass a bond. But right now, they have not adopted a capital state budget. So there's some unknown in that column as well. But the point of this is, even with the increase from the state to basic education, there are many, many needs that are outside of the program of basic education that are not going to be funded as part of the MacLeary solution.
And I might add, they're still underfunding basic education, too. So that's part of it. Yeah.
Now, I have to ask a naive question, but where did MNO go on this slide?
MNO and EPNO are synonymous.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay.
We changed the name because MNO was not really descriptive of what we did with the money.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That was back in my early days. One of the things I want to reiterate for the public, when you mention things that the state doesn't consider basic education, that's very debatable. For years now, the state has thought that our teachers could go into the classroom with increasing demands, increasing expectations, ever since House Bill 1209 was passed in the 1990s, without any, or one day, I mean, there was a time when they paid for three days of professional development, and then they cut it to one, and then I think they cut it to zero for a while there. That is ludicrous to think that teachers can go into the classroom on a daily basis and meet the expectations we have to them, for them, without planning time and professional development. And so our voters have, for decades, supported that through our levies. And frankly, and maybe you'll, I don't know if you're covering it in this report or not, I don't think they still understand that that is part of basic education, professional development, and teacher training.
As part of the MacLeary solution, they're going to be, over the course of three years, funding three. So they'll build up to three days of professional...
Completely inadequate and ludicrous.
Right.
That is my hard-earned opinion, and I'm gonna keep going. You've only got four more meetings of me doing this.
It's okay, Nancy. We'll miss it. Okay.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna keep going. So the point of the previous slide was to help establish why we still need local levies and bonds, even, you know, irrespective of what's happening at the state level. So the important thing to highlight here, though, is those new limits. So the legislature did impose new limits on districts' ability to collect local dollars through local levies. This is specific to the maintenance and operations levy slash educational programs and operations levy. So in the past, that levy's been called an MNO, or maintenance and operations levy, in recognition of the fact that that doesn't really explain where the money goes. We have used the terminology "educational programs and operations" to explain what that levy is. So the limit is specific to that levy, and the limit is this, beginning in 2019, the maximum EPNO levy a local district is allowed to collect is either $1.50 per thousand of assessed value, or $2,500 per student, whichever is less. Okay? So for Lake Washington, the lesser amount is $2,500 per student, which equates to about $1.29 per thousand of assessed value. Now, it's interesting because our current EPNO levy rate is $1.31 per thousand of assessed value. So you can see, the difference is not significant at all. So this limit has not significantly impacted Lake Washington School District. What is confusing is, the limits impact different districts, individual districts, very differently. So if you go to the next slide, since we already have a relatively low levy rate, and a high student population, the change doesn't significantly affect our ability to collect local levy dollars. However, there are districts across the state with local levy rates, EPNO rates of $3 per thousand of assessed value. So now they're experiencing a cut, either to the $1.50 or the $2,500 per student. So it's really a factor of what, how does the limit compare to your current? And how does it play with how many students you have? Because you have to go with the lesser amount of the $1.50 or the $2,500 per student. So it's affecting every individual district very differently. This is how it's affecting Lake Washington.
And just to clarify this, those with really high assessed value are going to have the least impact, am I right? Because a district with a really high assessed value is able to collect more money at a lower rate.
I think we have other districts in the area, such as Seattle and Bellevue, that had high grandfathering levy, you know, so they were grandfathered at a much higher percentage. And so they are still affected...
I understand. Yeah, I was gonna bring up grandfathering next.
From a rate, yes.
But just without the grandfathering, which has created huge inequity since the Dorn decision in the 1970s, and the legislature, this is their first real attempt to do anything about that. But even without that, still, because this is collecting money on assessed value, if you have a very high assessed rate, Seattle, Bellevue...
Well, we'd have to look into, though, they, right, because they would have to go with the lower.
So they've made that adjustment with the 2,500.
Seattle and Bellevue would be at the 2,500, like we are.
So the main impact will continue to be to those districts that had significant grandfathering, or, again, the districts with really low assessed value.
Yeah, someone like, as Tracy mentioned, someone who's at $3, their MNO or their EPNO is at $3 per thousand, some of them will be going down to $1.50 per thousand.
So some of our poor districts in the state, property poor districts in the state, are still going to carry burden.
Well, so, there's a related question. So you talked about a limit on how much we can collect, but they also changed the categories you can spend it on, right?
Right. So we'll, let me get to that in just a moment. So bringing it back to, I think it's, I think what the, what the point here is that the new limits affect individual districts very differently. What I want to make sure that all of our viewers understand is how it affects our district.
Right.
And then, of course, other districts can speak to how it affects them. Why I mention that is because people might be reading things in the news, and you can't just extrapolate what's happening in Bellevue, or Seattle, or anywhere else, and say, that must be happening in Lake Washington, because it's affecting every district very differently. So just back to highlight again, how it's affecting our district, is we have to go with the lower amount, which is 2,500 per student. That equates to, you know, capacity of about $1.29 per thousand of assessed value. And I'm gonna get to our planning and next steps shortly. But the change, the new limits, don't really significantly affect our ability to collect local funding.
Two cents.
Right, two cents. Yeah. It is. So not much of an effect at all. Okay. So, where are we right now in terms of planning for local measures? We're planning for the second of our four planned bonds, as part of our long-term plan. We had the 2016 bond, and as we all had talked about at the time, that was the first of four, to address our long-term needs and to meet the recommendations of the Long-Term Facility Planning Task Force. So our next bond is planned for 2018, along with the replacement of two expiring levies. So our levies, that EPNO levy, or educational programs and operations levy, and that capital projects levy, they're on a four-year replacement cycle. Our voters last passed those levies in 2014, and they will be expiring in 2018. So in addition to the second of four planned bonds, we've got the two expiring replacement levies coming up in February 2018. So we'll be running three measures: EPNO, capital projects levy, and bond. Yes?
I just want, yeah, okay, sorry. You've got the bond. The bond piece, I really want to emphasize for our viewers, this is the second step in us catching up on the growth of our district. This is all new construction. I mean, we already had, how many new students do we have as of September?
Well, I guess spoiler alert, we're about, it's preliminary numbers, and we'll be giving the board an update, but we're about 600 today. We don't have, you know, we don't have the official October count yet. But still, that's it, you know, elementary, the size of an elementary school.
And we still need those facilities, and they're not part of the MacLeary solution.
For those of you in the audience whose commuting route doesn't take you past the construction sites, there has been massive, massive moving of rock, timber, whatever... the construction sites, there has been massive, massive moving of rock, timber, whatever. The idea is, there has been some great progress made. One of the sites, the New Middle School over Redmond Ridge, is on my path, and each day, it looks different and closer to a real, actual construction site. So it, it is, there's progress being made, you can't see it if you don't go by it very often, but perhaps even less often that you'll buy, you see a major change.
So Chris had mentioned earlier that there are specific categories of things that can be funded through the EPNO levy. That includes, of course, activities and athletics, salaries not associated with a program of basic education, enhancements to the program of basic education. For example, if we want to implement a seven-period day for our high school students, that will be funded through the EPNO levy. We don't receive basic education funding to do that, as well as professional learning, and that's, as Nancy mentioned, professional learning, professional development earlier, that's a significant part of how we will use those funds as well. And of course, when, we've got a couple of study sessions coming up with the board focused on levy and bond planning, so we'll get into the details and discussion of all of that prior to the plan coming before the board in October for approval. The capital levy, of course, funds technology, including infrastructure, systems, equipment, training, facilities, and district facilities, including all the building systems and improvements, new roofs, athletic fields, all those kinds of things, not the actual buildings themselves, the buildings themselves are funded through the bond, and we already have the projects identified, because that was part of the long-term plan developed prior to the running of the 2016 bond. So we'll get into the details coming up in the next few weeks, but if we go to the next slide, I think there may be some questions, people should remember, I hope, that in 2016, we made a commitment as a district not to raise the local tax rate. We said we are going to maintain the tax rate over the long term, and based on the fact that we do expect, we haven't received it yet, we are trusting, we'd like to trust that the legislature is going to come through with the additional basic education funding, that if that actually happens, we're not just looking at how we can not raise the tax rate, we're looking at how we can actually reduce the local levy rate, since we are expecting those new state revenues. Now, again, there's lots of things that that won't pay for, and we'll still need funding to pay, to continue the things that we're doing today, but we're actually looking at how can we decrease that rate as we move forward. So a couple of study sessions coming up with the board, we've got, we've convened the bond and levy advisory committee, we had one meeting with them in June, and we could only get so far, because that was prior to the legislature completing their session. We've got two meetings coming up with them in the next couple of weeks. We've got a couple of board study sessions on October 2nd, we'll be providing a formal presentation at the board meeting, and then actually asking the board to vote on those resolutions at the October 16th meeting. So this is just a little bit of preview on how the McCleary solution has, is interplaying with our bond and levy planning, and more detail to come. Thanks, Barbara.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, go for it.
As you do the, the presentation at our work session and the other components, especially around the levy things, and those, anything that we're looking at asking the community for, it'd be great to know of whatever impacts we currently have. So in sense of the new teacher program, if we're going to have the levy in which to pay, it'd be good to know what those impacts are, why it's valuable, why, so kind of value-added by our doing these specific things. So the more that, that can be made clear as to what we're looking to fund there, that would make it easier for the decision at this level.
Great.
Any other questions on the topic? Well, thank you for doing your best to clarify a still modestly confusing issue, and we're looking forward to figuring out, out of that dollar thirty-one of our existing levy, what pieces actually are in the McCleary solution. So we're waiting with bated breath for that. Thank you again. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Reapers. We're on to the legislative update. Mark, anything else to report?
Lives of all of us are safe because the legislature's out of session. No, seriously. The WASTA, the State School Directors Association, will be having its legislative meeting to set its priorities, and to, we, maybe even looking at some nimble moves to address the issues that came out of the special session. Throughout the summer, I've been meeting with several of our reps, and some of the candidates that are running for the offices, to try and make sure they understand our perspectives. And I think in the past, we've always really looked at this, our legislative agenda, or our legislative rep as just reporting about what is happening. What I'm trying to do is see that we go beyond just the state, and we talk to each level, whether it's, whether it's the city councils, it's the OSPI folks, it, we really need to be focusing on beyond the state legislature, not because they're not important, but because they're one, they're a major player, but they're not the only players, because we really need to reach out to our entire community, state, local, federal, so forth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next agenda item, any board follow-up items from previous meetings, or things you'd like to put on the agenda for the future? Okay, hearing none. Any debrief on how we're doing in conducting our meetings? I think we're doing all right. I'm proud of us for starting at seven o'clock tonight, thank you. Any board member comments?
There we go. Comments, I was going through which category I was supposed to go into.
No, I, I think we should just lump them all together, so go for it.
One that, I just want to make sure it didn't get hidden anywhere, because I saw, and you mentioned it actually, was the seven-period day at the high school, and I actually called that out. That went out in connections, or I don't know which one, but just, that is something that is looking at the implementation of the seven-period day at the high, at the high schools, and so there's more information in the newsletter that went out, so I think that's a great thing, that's been worked on for a long time, and has been a priority to deal with providing opportunities to our students. So I think that's a great win, that we're actually in that process of doing so. The other I'd like to highlight is the statement on DACA, that also went out in that same newsletter for the deferred action, and I forgot what CA stands for right now.
Childhood arrivals.
Thank you, for childhood arrivals. Appreciated that that was done by the district and has made clear sort of where we stand. So if you have more questions on that, again, that's there as well, but to know that we are paying attention to those sorts of things and taking action, appreciated the timeliness of that response. So just sort of wanted to put that out, and also the Ledge Assembly is coming up for the school directors, the town hall will be happening, so you have received the priorities. I'd recommend reading through them and sending anything back to Mark, he's going to be attending.
So I would definitely second the comment around seventh period, seven-period day. I will tell you that, just by eavesdropping on the jazz band carpool, it is clear that existing high school students are starting to plan under the assumption it's happening, so let's keep that train on the tracks. All right, any other comments? Great. So our upcoming board meeting schedule, on September 18th, we've got a 5:00 PM study session on the short-term facility, bond and levy, this is going to be a recurring theme till February, location in the Hughes Room. Then on October 2nd, at 5:00 PM, we have another study session on the bond and levy and seventh-period day, so yay. The location again being the Hughes Room, and on October 2nd, it will be our standard first meeting of the month, here in the board room at 7:00 PM, with the opportunity for public comment. And as always, public comment is not restricted to three minutes speaking to us, there are many ways to contact us, and if you are interested in the conversation, it's generally best to have a conversation with us. Start with an email, but take us to coffee, we'll, we'll listen to you, usually at the hours that we can get to you. All right, so with that, I don't think I've got anything else that needs to be done, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Siri, you almost dropped the ball there, Nancy was gonna, all right. So moved by Director Liliberty, seconded by Director Bliesner, we're almost ready for Director Bernard to retire. All those in favor, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, meeting's adjourned.